Let's go ahead and stand up, say the pledge. Let's see if it trail. That's bad on the approval for you again. Second. I'll say James and Randy, all in favor? Any announcements? That's all. Okay, I've got a few here on public comment. For more, if you would step up and tell you name.
Okay. Shannon, if somebody is going to speak during a public hearing, they can.
Okay, so. Is your comments not going to be said during the conditional use amendments?
I think so.
Well, let's, let's hold off the land. Melissa Rayfield, are you in the same situation or?
I would like to comment on what's going to hopefully pass.
Okay, so let's hold that to land too. Charles Gaither. Is yours similar? So you've got conditionals on.
Yes.
All right, so let's hold them off and we'll get them and you're in the formal procedure of that and it can be entered. Okay. Have I approved on the consent agenda? I'm going to listen to the group. Randy, have I a second? Thank you, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the regular agenda, let's see what that sheriff's department's got to tell us. Come on up, guys.
Captain Starling, just one moment, speak presentation.
Okay.
Why are you doing that all?
Yeah, go for it.
Thanks again for having us, mayor and council. I was trying to think of how to start this off tonight with a new council and since the last time we did this presentation.
Sorry, it didn't make.
Okay, so I'll tell you how it started off. So just to introduce myself, my name's Andrew Starling, one of the district captains here at the sheriff's office. Those who don't know, when Sheriff Griffin took over in 2018, he decided to break the county up into four quarters. And he signed the district captain beach water. That way we could build relationships and foster relationships within the communities that we represent. So I have the North District, which includes the right side of 191. Well, there's supposed to be a map up there. Sorry, must be in the, the copy I sent you. If you look at your map, you'll see the district captain map, I'm in the purple. So I have everything on the right hand side of 191 up to 280, right side of 280 to old 191 or old Haywood Road. I have the right side all the way to the county line. So I represent, you know, half of Mills River and then our newly promoted captain Jake McNamara here in the back of the room. He has the left side of 191, everything out to 80 to the county line and the left side of old 191. So if you have anything you need as far as the sheriff's office, talk with us. You can give one of us a call. We'll put our office numbers on there and just give us a call and we'll be happy to answer any questions. So any questions about the district captain map? So that kind of covers Mills River. And you see Captain McNamara has all the way down to Crab Creek Road, those side of head of law. And then Captain State has the south and then Tim Griffin has Edneyville on these side. It's worked out pretty good. We've been able to foster a lot of relationships since this worked out. Moving on, just to give you an overview of kind of what's happened in the town of Mills River over the last year as far as stats, everybody likes stats. In 2021, calls for service were down eight percent inside the town. Our top three calls for service were extra security patrols. And that's where our deputies drive through housing developments, stop at businesses. Anytime somebody goes out of town, they want to call the sheriff's office and have your name put on a list and it will patrol your neighborhood of your house while you're out of town. So we had 1,800, 18 of those this past year, which was our number one call for service. We conducted 651 traffic stops in the town last year. And then we had 229 suspicious vehicle calls. Was up for that last year for actual crimes that happened in the, in the town last year, animal enforcement calls. We had 284 B and E's, larcenies, we had 150 calls and then we had 103 domestic disturbances. You see what we're around on law enforcement every year, that's usually our highest. Call volume within our organization. So you can kind of see the numbers over the years. 2021, we had 284, but in whole county, we had 4,512. So our animal enforcement folks are, are busy, very busy. So that kind of shows progression the last five years. So you can kind of see the consistency throughout the town. Any questions about any of that?
On the B and E's and larcenies, I mean, is a lot of those repeats by the same person or group of people? Or was it more individually?
More individual. We had some businesses seem to, to get hit year in, year out, kind of meat tractor. Seemed like every year we'll go out there four or five times, you know, for somebody stealing something. But for most part, you know, unlocked vehicles, we try to tell everybody lock your doors. And we still have a lot of problems with people not locking their vehicle doors. So, you know, these thugs, you know, they're, they do what they gotta do. And, you know, if you don't lock your door, they're going to get it because they want the least resistance possible. So if you leave your pocketbook or computers or anything like that, lay on the seat, they're going to grab you. And so that happens a lot.
So if, I know you probably don't know that number, but the 150 count, how many of those do you think it would be the car break in or?
I have another slide here also about type one crimes. It may answer the question.
Thank you.
So here shows the last few years as far as total crime reports. And what that means is type one crimes. So this kind of answers your question. For a type one crime, the way that the I listed, you have violent assaults, rapes, murders, arson. Theft from motor vehicle and motor vehicle thefts are all considered type one crimes. So for the year, we had 112 of those calls within the town. So that kind of gives you, you know, a little bit of an idea of where that would fall. We're up a little bit. 2021, like I said, we did 651 traffic stops, which resulted in 74 arrests and 179 citations for last year. So we wrote a lot of tickets out here last year. Arrest went down a little bit. They did a good job as far as keeping that. But that's as far as the stats, that's what I have for this year as far as our calls for service and kind of categorizing where they're at. Oh, you have to answer any questions or if y'all like Captain McNamara to get up and tell them about himself, we can do that.
I won't hurt him to get up and let you split the session. Just get a face on.
Just, just remember us in this, this face to face.
Hey there, I'm Jake Murray. Newly, newly selected by Sheriff Griffin as captain of the western district county. Captain Starling indicated this the left half of 191, left side of 191 is the easiest way to remember that. If y'all need anything at all, feel free to call myself or Captain Starling will be pointed in the right direction. Been in sheriff's office for 15 years now, worked in criminal investigations. Patrol was where I spent most of my time, almost all of my time. I have a great working relationship with everybody at the office and I can get to where you need to go. So feel free to give me a call anytime and I'll be glad to help.
Okay, no problem. I appreciate it. If anybody has a question.
Something else I'll add, just because the road provides our districts, we're all a team. So we can make things happen, but this is kind of.
Whoever you can get ahold of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else on this matter? Well, we tend to, there will be a reconvene, our public hearing. Could somebody give us a motion on it, reconvene at that public hearing? Randy, a second?
I'm second.
Second, second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, I'm going to give soon, just a minute here and we'll think forward. Okay, all right, it could be all right for the staff to present to us.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. Michael now checks on the commissary. I'm going to review the staff report again just to give some more to people that I have outlined. So going back, May of last year, town council requested information about conditional zoning. And directed staff to draft this text amendment in August of 21. We provided an overview of conditional zoning for the planning board in September of 21. In October, we provided them a draft ordinance. The planning board acted on that in November. In their November 2 meeting of 2021 and they voted unanimously to recommend approval. We decided this, uh, January 13th, town council meeting, which council recessed, so the town attorney to review the draft ordinance. The town attorney has conducted that review, provided some minor comments to staff, which is incorporated in the updated ordinance. This hearing was properly noticed or the original hearing was with, I know this adds in the Hendersonville tax is on December 29th, January 5th. Anytime a hearing is recessed, then we can make no additional notices required. So a little background again, we currently review development and may use approvals as one of three types of administrative or staff level reviews. quasi judicial, specialty use permits, variances, and then legislative decisions, decisions before councils such as rezonings. So conventional rezonings are legislative decisions by council with advice from the planning board and modify a property from one conventional base district to another. So low density residential to next use, et cetera. And then every one of those districts has a list of permitted uses, uses allowed with a specialty use permit, et cetera. So the purpose of conditional zoning is to provide the town greater flexibility to tailor regulations to a specific site or a development that doesn't neatly fit within our town codes. Rezonings allowed per North Carolina state law 160 B703B. This being allows council to attach reasonable site specific conditions to any site development plan as part of a conditional rezoning. Conditions have to be agreed to and writing by both an applicant and the town and have to be related with the development conforming to some type of town regulation, parking landscaping, traffic impacts, et cetera. So we've included the revised text, basically the text outline, outlines standards for conditional zoning that can be altered and cannot. The process for application, application requirements and limitations on modifications of conditional zoning approvals. Conditional rezonings will follow the same procedure for conventional rezoning. So it still goes to the planning board for recommendation and then goes to council for final approval. If approved, once completed, conditional district is a standalone district. So instead of it being mixed views, it's a residential conditional district with a numbering system similar to what we do for specialty use permits. So it'd be residential conditional 2201 and it would be attached to that specific property only. That's the end of my review. The planning board again recommended approval, staff does as well because it's consistent with multiple parts of the making Mills River 2040 comprehensive plan. The ordinance taxes included in your packet as attachment A, the planning board recommendation is included as attachment B. And then again, if you do adopt it, the council has to adopt a statement of consistency with the comprehensive plan. A draft version of that is attachment C. Those were not tracked separately, but I'd be happy to go through it. So one change that was made is lines 12 through 14 on page three. She just recommended we change the district naming to MR dash R dash CE. I think before it just said conditional district. So again, it's using the normal zone district, no, no mention of the town. And each one is outlined here. So it's Mills River residential, conditional, so on and so forth. So that was one. That was changed on the next page as well, 34 to 36. I'm looking at, I apologize if the line numbers are slightly out. I'm looking at the version Sharon reviewed. Going forward to line 129, which is 154.196, section B, zoning amendment. She just added a line for traditional zoning amendments that exempt us provided in the new conditional code 154.067. For conditional zoning is just to clarify that, again, the conditional zoning requirements don't apply to regular rezonings. So that was one addition. Another addition, this is going all the way on my packet, page 19 of the ordinance lines for, for 12. Under modification of final approval in other areas of our code, we, or subdivisions, et cetera. There's basically a stipulation that if there's minor modifications of the plan due for just cause, like if there's issues with the grading and a building needs to be moved a couple feet. Or if there's existing vegetation and landscaping can be excluded, that can be approved by staff, but only up to a certain extent. That wasn't defined in the original ordinance that came before you last time. She recommended a definition and so that's outlined in more detail here.
Who defines land? Because there's no, there's nothing in here. This is what liner is.
In your heard.
Well. The way I read.
So basically I added the second paragraph, that minor modifications may be granted for the reduction or adjustment of up to 10% of the required parking, landscaping, building setbacks. Change in building dimensions or gross floor area. And basically a minor modification has to meet all other town ordinance requirements can only be granted for just cause, et cetera.
We have that in several other sections.
It is, and that's, that's UNC school of government guidance as well. But that was a comment of hers was it was not defined in the last language and we clarified that here. Another comment she had was about when, basically the application process for when the preliminary or final master plan would be included. So I included some additional language. If you go to the next page after the one we were looking at, section D, conditional district, the review process and approvals. There's another paragraph there that basically explains that you can apply both with a preliminary master plan process. Where again, you submit a not fully engineered master plan. And then you get approval for two years to come back with a fully engineered version. Or you can go straight through with the final master plan fully engineered. And basically if you get approval, you get this own apartment because it's fully engineered. So that language addressed that comment. And those are lovely notes that kind of come along.
I had some questions on these. And one of them, we've hit all over on here on, on line 415 about the modification of final approval of the minor modifications that conditional district side development. And it says the plans approved by the Mills River town council may be considered and approved by the town manager. The zoning will strager or as long as the west modification is not above a change in permitted uses. Um, I think if there's anything changed on that, it needs to come back to council before it's approved.
So you're saying you don't want to allow minor modifications approved by staff? That's only for minor modifications.
What do you call it, honor?
10%. And I can tell you from a builder's standpoint, almost every one of these could potentially come back with a minor. Some it could.
Usually if, again, if it's the fully engineered final master plan that's submitted. They've done so much work, usually there's not a request for a minor modification. But when you get the preliminary approval, which is again really more of a concept plan, where not everything's fully calculated out. They may go into the field and find some, again, usually it's topography or some other issue with the land that could call for a building moving by a feet. So it's just to allow them to go to staff to get that instead of reapplying, going to the planning board, going to council and basically that taking up another three months of effort, half of this time.
Well, how about if they have minor modifications, you at least know about council about that. And let us know what's going on.
It's not written that way now, but I mean, if that's something council would like to see, that could be added. Again, this is all draft language, it's adopted. So I'm, I'm here to take your direction. But I'll just say of all other places in town code where this is outlined, it's just a staff and applicant process. But again, I never tried to exceed my authorities. I mean, I've told people before where they're requesting more than that or not very good reason, no, or you have to reapply.
Can you possibly show us or describe to us some situations where it fits in that 40-year master plan?
The consistencies.
Yeah, or, you know, the, maybe not the consistencies, but a good example for the council and the public to.
So when there's any ordinance amendment like that, my job is to look at the making Mills River comprehensive plan, which was informed by staff, council, the public, et cetera. To make sure what's being proposed is in a life. And I'm just going to read off the, the planning board statement of consistency. So I don't think the public's seen that. But basically what was found to be consistent is that the proposed change in regulations is consistent with objective 1.4, which talks about consistent and updated code ordinances and land development regulations in it specifically. This policy says enact new and revised land development regulations within the code ordinances on an as needed basis to meet the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The other one was expanded tax base and long-term fiscal responsibility. Establish and maintain zoning categories and land available for development that will ensure the long-term fiscal health of the town. I know of a specific example last fall where there was an economic development project, you know, I can't talk about the specific tenant that was looking at a site that was, was not going to work based on our current regulations. If there was a conditional zoning process in place, they could at least apply it to the town to negotiate some special regulations, permitted uses for that site. That wasn't in place. So we basically just had to tell them no and they moved on. And again, conditional zoning, it's a legislative decision. So if someone applies, it's not a done deal. And, and again, it's about the negotiation. The council can negotiate with the applicant or conditions for the less permitted uses. And if council was not satisfied with that, it's denied. The last objective that was consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan and the proposed conditional zoning regulations is adequate capacity to support job development. So hitting on that same thing, maintain zoning categories that allow for job rate uses. Again, there's just some uses that just don't fit within our zoning districts that frankly haven't been updated in quite some time. This allows for that flexibility.
I got a question on the modifications. Sets in all of the other. Is that an exact copy?
I didn't copy, it was in the other text, but basically I used the school of government guidance. I think I think the part based without what could be modified.
Yeah.
So parking, landscaping, building setbacks, et cetera. I think that's what the subdivision code.
Yeah.
Because that allows minor modifications to the same extent.
Basically the master plan or this preliminary plan would be approved by us potentially. Then these minor 10% changes will come, I think, either in that process, if it's preliminary. Once the master would be designed, it would only come to you guys for slot modifications up to the 10% if they run into something on, on the slot. Correct. Yeah, right, sounds.
Correct. And if there's a major modification, and which again is change to trap, you know, road layout, you know, access to the site, that's when staff would basically say that's a major modification. You need to go through the whole process again to amend it. And again, it can only be amended by going through the whole process. So that's another application back to the planning board and back to council.
So, so, so we've been here since the town started. So the board of adjustments seems to be having a lot more cases from before. Is that because Daniel and Michael might be our answers? Are people, are developers looking to use the board of adjustments for a variance? Because we don't have something like this in place instead of a conditions on.
Well, the, the purpose of a board of adjustment in any community is, is to serve kind of as a relief valve. So if, if the, the easiest explanation is that you want to put your house on, on a piece of land, but you can't quite meet the setbacks and you need a two-foot variance. Now that's the purpose of a board of adjustment is to, is to review that and grant it if it meets the standards. I can say, and I won't have any of it for, for. I can say, and I've been here for, for a couple of years now. People are getting creative with, with property. Uh, which is, is pretty normal to see in a growing community. Uh, when they start looking at property that's not completely flat and not right against the road. They're looking for ways to develop other land that, that might not otherwise be the most ideal piece of land to develop. And, and that will only continue as, as a town continues to, to build out. Now, in the, in the very beginning of this text, it specifically states that this process is not to be used as a variance. And, and so that's, I guess that's our way of, you know, legislative sense, putting it on paper that this is here as an option, but it's, there's no way to guarantee. And it's not just a way to get around the, the variance that would be reviewed and approved by the board of adjustment. I can, I can say from my experience and speaking with Sue and, and previous council members that. And there was a period of time, a couple of years with the board of adjustment did not meet at all, there were no cases to be heard. That has not been the case in the last thirty months or so, they've been meeting quite a bit. And, and I would, I would put that back to the. People trying to find ways to use land that. Are new and somewhat unique and the land is not always perfectly shaped. They're trying to make it work.
Any more questions before we move to the public?
I have one question. Um, if property is zoned and. It's set up and what's on it now is not what necessarily it's zoned for. But it was grabbed all of it in. If that goes away. Can they redo it with what was there?
Like, can you answer that one regarding non-conformities?
So you're saying. There's a, we call it non-conformity, so if somebody put this grandfathered in as a non-conformity, you're saying if it's rezoned as part of this process, can that stay?
No, I'm saying that. Suppose there was a. Barn. And it is in a lot industry area. And the barn rots and falls down and comes apart. Can they go back and rebuild the barn?
They can, so that, that's covered by the non-conformity section of our code that basically spells out. Grandfathering of uses, both you grandfather uses that are non-conforming and structures.
Well, and that's an agricultural spinoff, let's, let's take it to a different angle. If a person is living in a camper. And it's zoned. Lot industry. And the camper falls apart. Can they go buy a new camper and put it on there?
If the utilities are all, if the utilities are all existing. I would think so. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll do your example a little bit because a camper's not a structure, so it's kind of a gray area with the code, but let's say it's a.
It's got the little jerk off in its front.
So like a manufacturer house. Um, yeah, that, that would be allowable. So basically, we, we allow for replacement of the non-conformity, but it has to be done in a six-month period. So it can't, you can't just continue forever. So within six months of it falling down, let's say, if they rebuild it in a period, they retain the grandfather status. Now, they can't expand it, you can't. Put three more campers or mobile homes connected to that, it has to stay as it was, but that is permitted, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sue, I've got, I've got one more. I've got a problem with line one oh seven.
What, five density?
So that, the conditional zoning districts may allow for modifications to, I mean, and all for the following. So. This is what Mill River is all about, I think, is what it is. Maybe outside. This is somehow. I cannot support this. As written with those two lines in here. I don't, I don't want this conditional zoning. Text to even mention that that is an option to increase density or decrease lots of.
I'll, I'll. Agree with that, and that, that was where I was going when I called and asked you if. The old zone superseded, you know, those rules superseded the new. Yeah. I agree, I'm pretty good saying. No more dense, is that the right way to say that?
See, so just, you're saying strike those two lines, basically.
I would like to see those two lines scrubbed. As a, as something that would be allowed as an application.
I have another question, on then, not on, well, on density. So this could be used for. You can fit X number of houses on a piece of property. But you would conditionally zone it if you wanted to put that same number of houses just in the corner and have the rest open.
You can actually do that under our current section of our code right now, it's called a planned unit development. Um, and there's another one I'm blanking on. Um, but basically, it's for, it's for the preservation of land. And that's, that's what, you know, why the more type family sections allow, yeah, through the major special use permit process, they all go. Through a special use permit process that comes before council. But it allows the cluster unit development, that's the other one. It allows the clustering of homes on smaller lots. More dense than normal in exchange for preserving the rest of the tract. Normally, it would be used, let's say, like if there's a track that goes up a mountainside. And that mountainside has steep slopes that can't be developed. So a developer right now can apply for that, again, it would have to come before this council. But again, the, the purpose of that was to cluster homes in order to preserve natural land or it could be agricultural land, it could be anything.
Okay, I still want to move forward and hear from the public both for and against possible. But before we, it's other than public, this typical public comment, do I have anybody here that has a. Direct interest in us developing this conditional use amendment? Okay. Would you please come up and give us that, and I will get to everybody else in the regular public comment section.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, hello, council. I was glad to hear your comments about the concerns. Um, with the text amendment, I'm Jimmy Kim, I live off Presbyterian dirt road here in Mills River. Back in May, I think, last year, council directed staff to come up with some verbiage for this text amendment. And I don't really know the difference between a text amendment and a regular amendment, but I'd say it's not like anything. It's a pretty big amendment. Um, some more work was done in September and October. To give the plan aboard one of the idea. And, uh, they said it was consistent with two thousand forty comprehensive plan. And then we had an election. And maybe we got some different thinking on council right now, I don't know. But I understand a proper notice was given for this. I don't know how many people in Mills River really know about it. Um, if it weren't for a phone call, I probably wouldn't know about it because. I guess it was advertised on the Times News and I read the Latin. You don't have, I couldn't find it on the webpage, maybe I didn't dig deep enough, but it sure wasn't posted on the door. Sure, or, uh, posted on the website where a person could find it very easy, nor was the, the text for. But do you really wanna meet the legal notice, or you want your residents to know what's going on? Ask yourself that, please. The part I don't really like about it, um, the spot zoning. Uh, I think it bypasses the due process, yeah, may tie up. The board of adjustments and more may tie you up some more. But I think it's a way to bypass due process and allow the council to rezone the park or an area. Based on their own thought process or preference. Um, without the, without the process. Um, it may boil down to who bought you some game tickets, who bought you some concert tickets, who paid for your ski trip? Or who called you five minutes before the meeting? Um, and how you vote on one of these. Staff came up with the verbiage of the, the intention of it. It would create spot zoning for commercial industrial district. I had the same concern when I read it about, uh, density. I think the process isn't exactly fair to surrounding residents for those tracks. Um, so to the rezoning. It seems to me that it's allowed this to give the council power to throw the plan in the ditch, throw the comprehensive plan in the ditch or zoning. And approve whatever the individual plan got pitched for the development. As high as the budget for the parcel, I think it gives too much power to five people and it takes away from, from the people. If we don't like what you do with spot zoning, we can fix you in the next election, but we can't fix Mills River, the damage will already be done. This sounds pretty convenient for staff and council as a management tool, but maybe not so much for the people that live here. There's a bottom line, I'm against. If we can't stop growth, or we can't stop growth, but I'm not convinced this is a management tool and need a man. Thank you.
Okay, once again, this section here is for people that have a direct use for this zoning condition. Do we have any more that would like to speak in that behalf? So I'm gonna move, skip this next section and go straight to the public comment because it was supposed, I think Jimmy's was more directed at it, just as personal. So, uh, next, um, my public comment, I've got Barbara Moore signed up to speak.
Good evening, council members. Staff and guests, I'm Barbara Moore.
Yes.
I can put my teacher voice on. I'm the council member's children and even the council member. I love Mills River community. I love it, there is no other community like it. Um, I stayed informed over the years from the beginning of the incorporation process. Through the party developments and some really good things have happened from this river. Our biggest reason for incorporating was to maintain and preserve the rural atmosphere of our community. We did not want to be an ashful of scyllan or arden. Commercial development and high-density housing. We want our farmers to be able to go about their livelihoods without being harassed. And they are harassed, I've seen it. Um, people don't understand where their food supply comes from, they get behind a tractor. Or someone pulling a hay tetter, one of them was me. And you're just harassed, I was flipped off by a bunch of bicyclers. And, you know, it, it's not what we want for our community. Um, we don't want private jams in other crowded schools. I know our schools, our elementary school, our middle school and our high schools are some of the best in the area, some of the best in North Carolina. I'm very concerned if this conditional zoning were to be passed, we would be looking at high-density housing. Maybe not next year or the next. But it is coming, and along with that will be wind assisted with it. These things are necessary for some areas, but they're not a fit for, for Mills River. Uh, once sewer is available, if conditional zoning is an option, then we won't be able to control these high-density housing. Uh, in our growth population. Most developers are in it for the return and they move on without thinking about their purpose and just they leave all the. A lot of people that would live in high-density developments. They're not Mills River people, they will move on when their families grow and they're out there. They'll move on to other areas. We do not want to be the cheap housing for the hashful area. I realize there is a need in our community for affordable single-family homes for our young families. Also, thank you, there are solutions that can be found within our present zoning ordinance. We've worked several years to develop and implement the restrictions that many feel best. And stay with the present code and not lose sight of what would incorporate in Mills River. Thank you.
Okay, next I have Melissa Raygill, would you please come up?
Well, I wanted to come in regards to the next public notice.
Okay.
Which kind of ties into this because we've been affected by development and not being known.
Well, if you feel like you have information or. We would love to hear it, or if you want to just wait, we can wait, so do you. I'll give you your time if you want.
I think I'll wait because it's really about education, really.
I'll make sure I get to you next, Charles, Kate.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thanks for tuning in. And I appreciate the preceding speaker, he described some of the goals or, pardon me. Some of the goals that were discussed so much at the time that Mills River was incorporated. And, um, and that, I think that carried a date, preserving that rural character and control of development. And I think overall, that's, that's been the goal. And I, I am making the assumption that our present, uh, zoning areas have been set up. Trying to meet the, the goals that have been set forth. That's the best part of buildings. And when I see conditional zoning, and I have had some experience with it in general. My objections are more general than specific. Uh, because. Once it's, we dignified these conditions that can be met and justify certain types of building variation. We know that the developers, if they feel that they're gonna have an borderline situation meeting our present plumbing. And we're going to look over that with an eagle eye and look for some possible weaknesses that they can pursue. At the same time, that makes it more complicated and more confusing on the part of the people that we're asking to enforce our regulations. I mean, you're the ones that make the decisions on these things, and I imagine you see this from time to time. It doesn't need to be a lot more confusing for any of us. But, uh, again, I feel like a hundred people in our area agree with me on this. And I just hope to take it with a symbol of challenge and go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, that's all I had on my list, uh, yes, council discussion. So I've got a question for staff. So. This zone, conditional zoning text amendment. We don't have any conditional zoning in ordinance book at all as a product.
Correct, if you wanna develop, you have to apply by the permitted uses or uses allowed via special use permit in the contractual zoning.
I'm just trying to clarify the amendment for, for others than everything staff. So. Speak now in favor of hold peace, um, how you feel?
I will, we have a question asking.
I've said, well, I think about, you know, it's the. And you make anything that measures a little dense or reduce the lot size that you have on the books now. So. Outside of those. And, and really. You know, I wouldn't mind thinking about this a little longer myself. Just getting my head around it a little bit more, because it's, I think this is a good deal. And, and you're starting to create a, a whole new zoning. Just, and you're three of us, you know, come in here, we heard it the other night for the first time. We wasn't in the origination stage of it, we'll say.
My biggest heartburn with this is that I feel like this is in response to another problem we've had in the past. And I think we are trying to make two, two problems don't make a right.
So let me ask staff. If we took away the lot size and the density from this. Would it be a useful tool? Or do you think it's a total game change?
I'll let the town manager chime in on that to use a little more experience. I mean, I will say the, the economic development project that I was talking about, that this could have been useful or was related to a, a building size issue. So and it was a commercial development, so, um, commercial industrial. Next use district prohibits buildings larger than 15,000 square feet. You know, this person needed 20,000 square foot building. There was really no hardship for a variance. There was no other process. So.
Before we give it to Daniel, so is, would this possibly, since you've been here, be the only case that you know of that's come before you?
In my nine months here.
Okay.
But I think we need to keep in mind too, that people that have property and want to develop their property.
That's a
They develop an asset that they have, have rights to.
Exactly. That's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm with you on that. There's always two sides to it.
But what we have in place now, does that not cover it? When they can come for special variants?
Well, like you said before, though, if they had a third of an acre, half acre, five eighths of acre. Twenty-nine, nine, nine, nine. And they come to you and they've got that campground, well, now they want to build a house. Correct? Because the lot size is not the three quarter.
If a lot size does not meet the requirements of the zoning districts. It can be 30,000 square feet. Um, but it's existed since before the town existed. It can be developed.
Okay.
Uh, they might, the, the owners might need to seek a variance if they're looking to do something extremely large. Um, but basically the code is structured such that an existing lot can be developed. And if the setbacks can be met, they will be. If they can't be, it'll be to the greatest extent possible. Um, because you don't want to prohibit someone from being able to use their land just because the lot size wasn't acted 20 years ago.
Yes, thank you.
I'm just a little bit concerned about people using board adjustments more than what, than what's been used in the past. That's a volunteer board. None of them got elected. And they're making decisions that are very impactful to the surrounding area. So, and they do a good job. I'm not saying they don't, but
It's a lot of pressure.
I think it, I think if there's decisions that have to be made. That are tough decisions to be made and are, and are to be made by the, by this body. I just don't want to put a lot on board adjustment.
But in saying that, this year would come to us, correct?
That's right. Yeah, I just, I just want to reiterate that this is a, this is an option for people. You know, no one's guaranteed anything and, and why this is legislative as opposed to a quasi judicial, which for the benefit of the public. Quasi judicial means that an applicant has a certain set of standards to meet. And if they meet those standards, the town's obligated to issue the permit, whether or not anyone thinks it's a good or a bad idea. Uh, the difference between this being legislative is if, is you go out to the site and you look at it and you say, I just don't think this is a good fit. That's a perfectly legitimate reason to say no to a project. Um, if it's a quasi judicial, as in the board of adjustment decision, they don't have that luxury. And, and that's why this is, would come to you all for a decision in the first place. Um, and if you, if you don't want to approve the project or you offer conditions that the developer is unwilling to meet. You don't, you don't issue the, the approval and, and if they have to go back to the drawing board. Um, so this is in no way guaranteed anything other than an option that is available to, um, property owners. It's authorized by state law. Uh, it's not something we have in the ordinance now. It's, it's an extra tool that could be utilized, uh, for projects that, that don't necessarily fit neatly within, within the bounds of the code right now.
We'd like to discuss more closed public hearing. I could decide in no way the other. There'll be more to discuss. Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for Texas.
Sandra, I'll favor. So we, I need a motion to either adopt, accept.
It can be adopted with an amendment.
It can be adopted with an amendment. It could be. Yeah. Wait, question? Uh, I'll make a motion that we deny the second on that.
I'll say yes.
Time for a vote. I'm on favor. So it's two. I will also at this point deny this. I don't think it's a fear at this particular time. But fair enough, so.
Three against and one for.
One for. With conditions.
So it was denied.
Okay. So we're moving on. So you called up.
Yeah, I have to get this microphone turned on because thank you for asking.
Moving on, uh, I need a motion going to public hearing text amendment, TXT twenty-one dash oh nine. Public notice requirements ordinance twenty-two oh three. I'll just cut that motion in a second.
Motion that we move into public hearing for text amendment, um, twenty-one oh nine.
Sandra, Randy, I'll favor. Okay. Going through again, uh. Staff on this one, what?
So the November planning board meeting, November twenty-twenty-one, members discussed adding to the town subdivision code. Uh, public notice requirement for residential major subdivisions nailed in host of health notice. In response to citizen feedback asking for this. Uh, they voted unanimously to correct the draft, staffed the draft, the text amendment. And it's coming to you tonight. This hearing could properly notice, but adds in the twenty-sixth and February second. So the town currently doesn't provide public notice for residential major subdivisions, major subdivision is a subdivision of eleven lots or more. It's not required in the town subdivision of zoning codes. And notice is normally not provided due to the fact that major subdivisions of single family to pass home is a use permitted by right. And many of the towns consisting in zoning districts. And it's not a change in the permitted land uses or rezoning. Usually public notice requirements are served for, uh, decisions regarding the changing of permitted uses or rezonings. Allowing a use of land not permitted by special use permits. And changing codes controlling development like text amendments, what we're doing tonight. Or other quasi judicial matters, variances, appeals, et cetera. So state law provides local governments limited authority in regulating subdivisions, but more broad authority in the process. So basically this public notice requirement would be allowed by state law. So what the planning board asked for and what I drafted is a text amendment adding language to the subdivision code requirement. Posted, a posted public notice sign, mail public notice to the subject property and to all adjacent property owners. For any residential major subdivision. Nailed notice to the adjacent property owners was recommended consistent with basically our public notice requirements for all other land use approvals. And we recommend keeping those the same, um, across all different types of approvals. Regardless of fiscal impact, there's minor fiscal impact. Um, stat estimates fifty to a hundred dollars in stat time per public notice, you know, per major subdivision. And three to ten dollars postage. Um, the town, you know, has larger blocks than a lot of other municipalities. So just based off some rough calculations I did, you know, normally we would need to notice five to fifteen properties around the major subdivision. That's just an estimate. So the planning board considered this text amendment at its meeting on December seventh, twenty-one and voted unanimously to recommend approval. I mean, this is at the conference of plans. The specifics are, uh, specific policies and objectives of the package are consistent or are in your packet. So the red line ordinance of having the requirements and attachment in your packet, the planning board recommendation and statement of consistency is attached with B. And just like the last one, uh, council would have to adopt a statement of consistency. Um, and that's a draft version of consistency. Don't have any questions. So minor subdivisions are ten lots or less, major subdivision is eleven lots or more.
I believe you entered it in the planning board meetings, but the mailing ten days, but no more than twenty-five is already law, right? You can't. It's already in between those days anyway.
It's what state law requires for all other land use decisions. So yes, we wouldn't do mail notice for a text amendment like tonight. It's only published in a newspaper. But if a property is rezoned, it's that property and the adjacent properties. Same with a special use permit. It's the subject property and the adjacent. Um, I'm sorry, you're talking about the, the days, but yeah, ten to twenty-five. No, whatever I had in the text, no.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's no more flexibility than that.
Now, now this, you, I mean, you can alter this. We're just recommending and, and the planning board is recommending to keep it consistent. Because if you, if you create a different public notice requirement, that could, you know, cause some confusion. We also didn't want to create, um, the sense that maybe more notice or more advanced notices being provided for one type of approval versus another.
And the reason for that being back in the day when it was first brought up. Twenty-five days, anything over that, they might forget misplaced their notice. But they need at least ten to make sure they can make arrangements to do, is the best I remember. So we established those numbers back in the day.
I would like to see more notice added because with everything else these days, evidently codes affect it. And the mail don't run off the used to. I mean, some days people get notices. You know, for bills and stuff like that. Up to and even after when they're due. And if they've gone out of town or something, you know, they may not, they may be gone for two weeks and miss the notices altogether. And I think they have the right to know.
Okay, I would say, I can't speak for the last four years. But prior counties, that was, that we typically got those things out pretty much two or three business days after it was broadly incorrect. More toward the twenty-five day notice than the ten.
Whenever possible, yes.
I would ask the clerk, do you have a, do you feel a need to get those things out? For, uh, more than twenty-five days?
Me personally?
Yes.
No, only for exactly what you just said. You want to give people time, but at the same time, you don't want them to forget. And what he's talking about would include posting property right there, you know, the subject property as well. So more than likely, someone's going to drive past the sign.
And that's what I was gonna add. That's why the posted notice is there. And I'll, I'll just say, you know, if council does want to increase town public notice requirements. I highly recommend doing it across the board for everything and not just one specific type of
But since you're asking, you might keep in mind, the longer the notice period. The, the longer the applicant has to wait to be heard.
Anybody got any final questions for staff?
So because a judicial said, Daniel, a notice that has to go back, go after that. So is that twenty-five day, ten day? Is that, is that guidelines by state law? So it can't be more than twenty-five.
You can go above and beyond state law. Minimum it has to be at least no more than twenty-five. But you could go beyond that if you wanted to.
So ten day would be one of the state with oldest two.
So okay, if we wanted to go above, it would be an extra mailing. But we would still have to buy by the state law.
To get one in there in that twenty-five.
Yeah.
So you would, you would theoretically, you'd have to mail twice.
You, you would have to mail twice.
Yes, yes.
Not that you're anybody would have to have.
And quasi judicial also has published in the newspaper as well, and it's twice.
It's twice.
Once within the ten days and once before you hit twenty-five in two consecutive weeks. So for example, the conditional zoning ran in Henderson Lightning on, because they only publish on Wednesdays on January twenty-sixth and February second.
Yeah, um. I potentially see concerns with, but I don't know how we would control, how we would write it up to control it. But a lot of these developments, we, we need to possibly reach out one more layer. Than just the ones touching. Because these things are getting so big and we're not used to this and those are, you know, we've seen a lot of build a house here, build a house here. Now we're getting these major subdivisions coming in. Or potentially coming in. And we got somebody that ain't exactly bordering on, never knows that this is coming unless the neighbor steps over and says, hey, you know, you know, I got this in the mail. Or they see the sign, but they're confused. A lot of people don't understand what those are. They call me and say, did y'all put a sign on that? Who wants this rezoning? What's this thing all about? So you had to, you know, it's just, you know, it's just, it's part of it. But maybe we need to potentially reach out another way. We need to think about reaching out another layer.
That came up at the planning board meeting specifically. Um, you know, usually it's done in hundred or two hundred fifty feet increments. So you know, noticing two hundred fifty feet out, five hundred feet out. Um, but again, we came back to the fact that we didn't want to again notice more people for one type of approval versus like a rezoning or a special use permit for town homes.
Got any more questions for staff before we move forward a little bit?
So if we did go down this road, could be, uh, could be financial impact, definitely tied to the primary.
Yes, yes, we, we would, we would need to amend the fee schedule. Number one, because quasi judicial letters are required to be registered, right? Or is that just special use permits?
Yeah, all quasi judicial public notice letters have to be registered, which I think in our most recent mailing, carrier price tag of fourteen dollars and change per letter for over five hundred something dollars.
Yeah, so it's required to go out first class mail as well as registered mail, which is unusual. Most places it's certified mail and first class mail. So yes, if we were to add a notification requirement, and unless you would like to set it otherwise, presumably that would be first class mail, which is, is significantly cheaper, obviously fifty six cents or whatever it is. So you're looking at doubling that. And then we would do the registered mail within the normal ten to twenty five day period. So we would need to either amend the ordinance to remove the registered mail component and, and leave it at certified mail or increase the fee schedule B so that when applications are submitted, we're charging enough to at least somewhat offset the cost of issuing that permit.
For this text amendment before you, it's the first class mail, just like for rezonations, it's just the quasi judicial requires to register.
Okay, at this point, I would ask interested parties that this would affect the fees, stand up and speak. If not, I will move on to regular public comment. Not hearing any of that. Okay, Melissa Rayfelder, would you step up?
Good evening, Tom Council. My name is Melissa Rayfelder. I live on Melbourne and Wayne. I grew up here in Melville River and I live in the home that my grandfather built. My family and I have been concerned with the adjacent Britain Farm, sends a sale to Big Hills Construction. Our property, our properties are joined by three hundred and fifty feet. I have expressed my concerns to three town managers and now three town planners since the sale. Although our concerns were voiced on numerous occasions, we were never informed of decisions made that will forever impact our twelve year life. In December of twenty twenty, I noticed that developer have advertised in for a community center, a playground, basketball courts, tennis courts. I promptly called the town and was informed that the planning board had passed two of the four things in June of twenty twenty. And there was only a thirty day, there was only thirty days to appeal their decision. This area is now a community area for fifty two homes that could be considered a recreation park that is fifty feet from my back door. Developer was not honest with their plans and the neighbors and as neighbors, we would forever pay the price of that. I called Daniel Cobb in August of twenty twenty to again reach out to see what considerations could be made to help us with the green space that was adjacent to our property that is now a recreation park. His response was to reach out to the developer and did not advise to speak with the planning board. I reached out to the developer as advised. And here are their responses. In text message from the Big Hills Construction representatives, quote, don't care about you, welcome to your community. The response from the owner via phone call was, quote, why you bother me? You talk to your husband, there are problems. And then he hung up on him. We met with representatives of the town planning board and council in twenty twenty one. We learned that our concerns were valid and would have been considered for appeal. But the window of opportunity to appeal had since closed. Had we been notified, we would have had the chance to make our concerns heard. The developer was caught building these homes twice the size they were permitted to build and were sided by Natalie Berry. Their orientation and close proximity has created an echo chamber. We hear children playing inside our home with the windows closed and the television off. This has been our experience with the recreation park behind us while construction is still occurring. We asked the resident in Melville River Crossing to please keep the noise down. And her response was, look, just wait, it's going to be crazy and loud back here. And if you don't like it, you should move. Um, the other experience was watching unattended children open urinate, urinate openly. There are six open spaces that Melville River Crossing had on their plans where they could have moved this recreation center to. This type of development should impact the people utilizing it and not the adjoining neighbors. Had we been notified of the change of plans, we could have made a case for a more amenable outcome. It's not lost on me that council can do nothing about these new constituents' bad character. But you can do something about helping long time residents protect ourselves from this type of development. I beg council to pass from and to inform, to inform adjourned, adjoining property owners to change proposed changes and enough time to at least allow for an appeal to be made. Only fair to allow residents of Melville River to understand and at least have a voice in the way in which development will affect them. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter tonight? Counsel discussion.
So Michael, um, so if there's a change, if there's a major change in plans, once it's made. What, what constitutes major change that has to make to you?
That's defined, if you go to page thirteen of the text, line two fifty. Obviously, here at the development plan is revised later date to affect any of the following. Increase the number of building lots to be created or units to be constructed, create a substantial change in the subdivision configuration, road layout and the way substantially change the use of any portion of the track, develop or building areas that were identified as featured in the site analysis, analysis sketch or development plans, open spaces or protected areas. These shall be considered major plan amendments and must be approved by the planning board. And then I go on to basically say they require public notice as well. With this particular situation, and this was before I started here, but the developer wanted to change an open green space to a programmed recreational space. They were told that was not a minor change and had to go back to the planning board for approval with the planning board handles subdivision approvals. And that meeting was held, but no one was notified, there were no public notes requirements. If this were to occur today, they would still have to go back to the planning board, but there'd be public notice, again, the sign and the letters.
Do you, as a zoning administrator, see any potential spots that we wouldn't notify the adjacent property owners in any of the other ordinances that we have? Or is all this taken care of in this text amendment?
You're saying in other ordinances, so not the subdivision code?
Yeah, that we need to look into later on.
There's not another kind of development approval I can think of.
Anybody got anything else to talk about on this?
I want to see more days added to the notice, to me forty five to sixty days. If that gives you time, number one, get it mailed. It gives you time to look at it, consider it and act upon it. And I feel like if you're passionate about it, you're not going to let it lay down and go to the side and you're going to call more people and inform more people.
So you're basically, you'd like to see the, the extra mailing and an extra fee schedule.
Yeah, yeah, if you need to, it can go on the developer, who's upon work, cover the costs.
Okay, so before we move on any further with that, is that a big enough change to this for it need to go back to be discussed?
I don't think that it is, no.
I think sixty days is a little long for the applicant. You know, you're, you are asking a landowner or developer to push plans out potentially two more months. I'm all for ample notice. I just, I don't know what that fine line is between too long.
Because most of this will be done in their due diligence period a lot of times.
Okay, so you think that there, there is time there?
Well, it's going to be a pressure. If, say, if you own the land, the developer is asking for this and we're waiting sixty days to get out and they're signing with real estate that they've got to have at least two plus months instead of just the, you know, forty five days or whatever. Because this would be part of their due diligence process because some developers wouldn't buy the property in certain situations if they, before this is heard and it was passed or denied. So it's double edged sword, but in, in some instances, some it would make a difference.
What would be another way they could get in touch with the neighbors and have his on there and tell them what they're wanting and do it?
Staff, any, any recommendations for that?
The, the only, I guess the best way you might say is to open the letter, read it, call your neighbor and tell them that, that there's something happening near, near their property. That's, that's the best way in our opinion.
And to be honest with you, I mean, the best way to make sure they know as the council is to either drive by, knock on their door, if you think it's a major concern, or give them a phone call if they know any of them. I think that would be outreach, you know, outreach and boundaries, it's a big concern to you.
And I was going to remind Senator, please use your microphone.
Well, I, I've never met the people that were here before, but I can sympathize with them. Um, I've worked shifts before and laid there and have, have to listen to a basketball being dribbled on dirt. It echoes, I, you know, I understand. And I think that in public recreation areas in housing communities should be towards the center of them rather than towards the edge of them. That way they can contain their own lewens and disturbances rather than the neighbors who've lived there before.
Well, I think that's something that we could address, maybe envision to be added to our special use permits for major subdivisions, possibly. That it would be a requirement if they was going to place one in there, that it might need to try to fit that standard. Or we could bring it up to them at the time that they apply for.
If, if you, if you want to get in, into that area of discussion, you would need to amend the code to, to say something to that effect. That it would have to be centrally located, not on the perimeter, something to that effect.
Which is something totally different than what we're working on tonight.
That's absolutely right. Yes. Yeah, and, and the instance that were, that prompted this discussion, like Mike said, it was originally designed to be open space. And, and the applicant, really unbeknownst to us, actually decided to do something different with it. And, and I ended up calling them and saying that you need to go back to the planning board and want them to make a decision on this. And so what we're talking about doing is when I made that call to the planning, planning board, we would also then tell the neighbors that, hey, your, your neighbor is looking to make the change that was previously approved.
So I think this, this council is consistent. And the only thing we need to figure out is if we're going to change the, the amount of time on the mailing and the fee schedule, if we extend it from twenty five to twenty twenty five to ten days, correct?
Mr. Mayor, we, we would not need to adjust the fee schedule to account for the extra mailing because it would just be first class mail. What I was referring to earlier was the quasi judicial with roughly fourteen dollars a letters can be applied.
So the question is, is the timing of the mail? Are we gonna, if we do it here, we're going to have to amend each and every one pretty soon to get them all up to speed, right, Michael?
That's just what's recommended, right?
Yes.
Because it should really be consistent across.
Exactly, because it could be, uh, uh, yeah, we want to make sure that.
And there are, in certain sections of the code, it, it is outlined that, you know, applications have to be submitted at a certain period of time in advance of the meetings, but that also, like you were saying, provides the applicant guidance. So currently subdivision plans only need to be submitted a month before the meeting. So if we're going to require a longer period of notice, there are other things that may need to be adjusted, is all I'm saying.
Okay, then presently we don't mail letters to adjacent property owners.
We don't mail anything for subdivision approvals, but for, yeah, for the other ones, yes.
Do you want to expand the area, the mailing area?
It's always a possibility. If we're going to do it, we need to do it now. The question is, in the Mills River, it being ruled, what exactly, if we're going to do it by feet, what is that number?
And I don't know that, I, I estimate it's based on adjacent properties, the cost.
So if you've got a map and you do a quarter mile radius in that that of the owners, is that what you're talking about? That bigger than areas?
Change your way of this, I mean, it's depending on where it's, where it's located and how many mailings would go out. And that fee schedule, if I'm correct in saying, is a set fee schedule. We would almost have to amend it to say that the permit, the applicant would have to be responsible for mailings in that quarter mile circle potentially to recoup our monies to stay revenue.
That's true. And, and just, just a word of, I guess caution, if you will. You know, single family homes are allowed by right in, in a lot of districts in town. And the reason that Mike has suggested that we notify the adjacent owners is again, one, for consistency. But two, is they're, they're the folks that are most directly impacted by any change next door. And I, I don't want to, we don't want to put unfair advantage on the developer to develop a piece of land that is allowed by right by, by sort of stacking that, if you will, against them by rallying the neighborhood. We have to look at it from both sides and, and we use the term developer generically, but I will remind you that there are, are locals from Mills River who, who will do this and have done this. And we don't want to be, we want to be as fair as we can across the board. And if you, and again, considering Hills River's size and some of the land area, if a neighbor has a, a long lot and the neighbor next to it is adjacent, but their structures might be a thousand feet from this, from the subject property, is it, is it really fair to the subject property to have someone who might not be directly impacted anywhere whatsoever to come and say, I'm against this development? And that's just, that's another variable that I think you should consider when making new decisions.
Anything, anything else on the discussion for about today, let's get through these days. Me personally, being on board for twelve years prior to this, I, I've never had hardly any issues with people complain about the mail, but I get your point about the mail not being as efficient as it once was. But I don't know that that's the town's fault, are we just trying to perfect, help? Making sure they get them?
Right, well, would it be feasible to have someone physically go out there and knock on the door?
No.
I don't know.
I mean, I mean, just point blank, if you're asking for my stack capacity, simply as all possible.
Last one mentioned before, it's something that I think they really need to know about. I think we should go personally, let them know how you just said that. Any more discussion? You get a little days right now, you want to bump them up? Now's the time.
Well, right now, they're ten to twenty five. How about we stay towards the twenty five?
Well, I mean, we, we. Well, we, we typically always do. Now, we could go to, uh, honestly, I would hate, as a, as a developer, I would hate to see that much more than about thirty-five. Because, you know, he's gotta get some other stuff done in that period, too. But it would be awful to have all these other due diligence stuff done, like all the town of Mills River does.
I understand that, too, but I, I think that if something's gonna come in that's gonna affect them like that, they do have to watch now.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, that's what this is for, this is, this is for to ensure that they get a chance to mail. They've been some, some holes in it before where they might not have been notified. This is to cover as many bases as we can. And the question, the only question we have is just, do y'all as council feel like the twenty-five to ten day period to get the mailings to them is, is, is efficient enough? If so, we'd move just to approve this, I would feel, but if you think not, we need to add it to the motion to get it put in.
Well, are they gonna be sent certified letters?
No, they'd be first class.
So, the public can't hear, out in, on Facebook.
Um, it's, it's, it's written right now, just to be first-class mail. If you, if you'd like to do it certified, we can certainly do that, that's a little bit more time-consuming, a little more expensive, but certainly manageable. Those are four dollars, maybe, I don't remember, it's been a while.
Four, yeah, four to eight, depending on what the returns.
Okay.
And, and unfortunately, public won't always sign for a certified letter, they, it scares them.
Honestly, what you'll have happen is those things you said at the post office potentially never gets mailed, never gets sent. I had read them, just in first class, myself, they'll end up in their mailbox, and then they'll get a chance to put their hand in it. If it's certified, they gotta go sign to do it.
No, that'll keep us from amending the, the fee schedule, if we just do it first-class mail.
Absolutely.
What can we do it to where when those letters are sent out, council is notified?
We, we, I think we, we can notify you of projects as they come in, in, in the typical weekly report that I send out. I'm just gonna be frank, we, we are a small staff with very limited capacity. And to do anything beyond sort of the normal procedure of notifying the neighbors via this first-class mail, it is really, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a challenge. And, and again, I'm happy to notify you, the council, when we get these plans. I don't think making it part of a formal ordinance is necessary.
Well, no, but if you'll notify us, then we can reach out if we
Absolutely.
To make sure that the public is notified.
Absolutely. And I, I, that's, I think that's part of your responsibility, so.
And one thing I'll state, too, that I present here is that, uh, one thing I started doing with quasi-trivial meetings is creating a certificate of mailing at the staff level or signed up on by the clerk. And that is actually in here, that the person mailing the notices shall certify to the planning board. That fact that they were mailed and the certificate shall be conclusive in the absence of fraud, so if a major subdivision comes in and I do a mailing, I will have a list of the adjacent properties and the subject property when it went in the mail, with the clerk's signature certifying that back. So it's not certified mailing, but it's certified by staff when it was mailed.
An internal check by our system, yeah, for that. So, I might make me a motion.
I'll make a motion, let me accept this.
If you're getting ready to vote on this, keep close to public here.
I got time to make a motion. Thank you, second? Second? All in favor? Yes, uh, cool, I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion if we this as presented. This being, it takes me twenty-one of them. That makes sense.
And I give a second. Again, okay, all in favor? You know us? Okay.
A separate motion adopting the statement of consistency, which is the tax see. No, you can just say statement of consistency for the tax.
Okay. Consistency. Second, all in favor? Okay, moving forward, uh, the process, uh, set forth of fulfilling the vacant council.
Mr. Mayor, I, I included this on the agenda this week, really as a benefit to the public, for bringing them up to speed on what we've done. Last, excuse me, this week, we, uh, issued a press release to all the local media outlets, posted on council's Facebook page as well as the website, announcing the vacancy created by Mr. Stein's resignation. Uh, we have asked that applications come in by next Friday, the eighteenth of February, which would give us as staff enough time to verify addresses and those sorts of things, and then provide copies to all of you the Monday preceding your next meeting on the twenty-fourth. Um, that way you all have a chance to review them in advance of the meeting. I have asked all the applicants that have submitted an application, that they come to the meeting on the twenty-fourth. In the event you all have questions for them. Uh, as far as an appointment procedure, you can make that appointment, uh, as soon as you're comfortable, it could be the twenty-fourth, it could be your next meeting, it could be a special meeting in between the next meeting, excuse me, in between the twenty-fourth and the tenth, that's entirely up to the board. Um, so again, this is really for the benefit of the public, I wanna just make that announcement that the seat is open. The, whoever is selected to fill that seat will serve the remainder of the term, which runs until December of twenty twenty-three. I'd have to answer any questions you may have about that, but that's all I have, thank you.
So basically, the interview process will be potentially done just by asking questions on the twenty-fourth?
We have a series of questions that we prepared a couple of years ago, which I'm happy to share with you all. So you can get those answers if you'd like, but that's, I'll give those to you instead of your discretion if you wanna ask those or others.
Would I get, I also want to just the application, then?
It certainly is, mailserver.org slash vacancy will take you right to the page that has the information about the opening, as well as a copy of the application. And those can be dropped off in, in person, mailed in, or emailed.
You know, we're gonna staff updates, financial group.
No report tonight.
Nothing to that? Okay, tax delay.
Um, we have your report for the month of January, or the year, year-to-date as of January. We collected two million, six hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty cents, which is ninety-six point five one percent. For all collections. That exceeds twenty twenty by almost a whole percent. Twenty twenty was the best we've ever done. And today, today, we actually got as much tax dollars as we got at the end of the month. The best year that we've ever had, which was twenty nineteen. Ninety-seven point four-two percent.
Awesome job.
The collections are going really well. Next week, I'm sending out some letters, uh, warning letters to specific taxpayers telling me that if I don't hear from them, either their bank account is gonna be attached, or I'm going to send them to the attorney.
And just for the public, how many years do, are they behind to get a warrant like that?
They have to be either, to be foreclosed on, um, it's either five years or a minimum of five hundred dollars. And they get a, they get a letter, and then they go about, you know, to get in touch with them. And that letter specifically states that it's going to be way more expensive if, if they don't come.
And one more question, the minimum amount of, say, personal property that we, what we wouldn't mail out?
Should we say that?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, the, the reason I brought it up is I had somebody the other day, they swore to, they didn't have it, but they said they got a bill for thirty-three cents. But I, and I told them I didn't believe it, but, uh, they said they got a bill for thirty-three cents, and the postage was fifty-five.
Yeah, anything under a dollar legally, I'm allowed to release. And I do do that because it's just not worth the paper, sending a bill. Um, occasionally we make a mistake. But I, I can't recall something.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. You got anything else? As our commissioner.
You've heard about enough from me, so.
Thank you. Tell me.
Um, I, I'm gonna take the mail check, I'm gonna end it on that, and I don't have any report.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, council, probably it seems like I didn't say anything, you know, boy. Get out of here, internet closer. All right, I would need a motion to recess or a few minutes to clear them. And I would like to thank everybody that come out and spoke tonight, and that's what the town of Mills River needs and council needs, planning board needs, board adjustment needs. Is we need to hear from the people that live here. Be it lived here five days or fifty years, they need to hear from them, see which way they want us to steer this panel. I really appreciate y'all coming out and speaking, it, uh, you know, we might be thinking the same way, or we might be thinking different, but either way, we work for you guys, the public. But seventy-five to eight thousand people that live here. So I gotta thank you before the wait.
You, you don't need a motion to, to the recess, because that's.
Yes.